All right, it is seven o'clock on Thursday, May 14th. This is the regularly scheduled Albernette City Council meeting. So I would like to call this meeting to order. We will waive the pledge of allegiance given our digital presence. And we'll proceed to roll call, city clerk.
Councilor Shantz. Councilor Bozenberg.
Here.
Councilor Trump. Councilor Menson.
Present.
Councilor Sarazin.
Present. Please let the record reflect that we do have a quorum to conduct business tonight. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, changes?
No changes.
So with that, I'll seek a motion. Motion by Shantz, second by Menson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we did receive the sheriff's report. There were 20 calls for service in the month of April. With 118 of the 43 required hours. So if we have any questions, address those with Danielle and she can get those sent over. Is the mayor's report, I will give the mayor pro time report. Not a lot this month, I just want to thank our city staff for everything they're doing. These are unprecedented times, you guys are really stepping up. Appreciate that you're flexible in how you work. You're working with community, doing things that are right, thinking ahead and really trying to be proactive. As well as normal daily duties that have to shift because you know, city hall can't be open. Guy working with the public, just being safe, so I just want you guys to know, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
And with that, I will open it to council reports. We'll start with Councilor Menson.
Nothing from me.
Councilor Trump.
Nothing from me.
Councilor Bozenberg.
Yeah, nothing.
And Councilor Shantz.
We'd just like to mention that we need to kind of watch our budget this year. Being said, our road use taxes could be short by probably 25%. And probably the same with our, our lost account will be short by that much also.
Great, thank you, that's a good call out. And is that because of COVID-19, is that correct?
Yes.
The League of Cities has put out different reports and documentation and trying to keep track of all that. And so I'm trying to pay attention and make sure I stay on top of it so we can circle back and look at the numbers. We have a better idea of how it will be impacted.
All right, with that, we move on to citizen comments. The first is related to agenda items, so if there are any citizen comments for agenda related items. Hearing none, I would move on to non-agenda related items. Any citizen comments on non-agenda related items? Right, and we'll move into written reports. So the first is from Fire Department Chief Graham, we'll recognize you.
I kind of slacked on getting my report out, but I'd like to purchase our last two air packs. And then I'd like to purchase five more sets of bunker gear. And I talked to Sandry Fire. And they can do it on our first bill. We kind of talked about it before the meeting here, and then the bunker gear, it'll take three or four months to get to be well in the July or August before we get it.
Did you guys all get the quotes and the budget report for the?
Yes, I will go ahead, just for the record, so the air packs were going to be about $13,966.46. And the bunker gear was $15,770.
Yep.
So both of those will hit next year's budget. So what did we budget for equipment for next year, Danielle, do you have that handy? About the same?
Let me take a look.
There is money left in this year's budget, we could prepay on one of those to use that up out of this budget. To take it more easy on next year's budget as well.
Yeah, my second question was if this year's would carry over.
Looks like we have $45,000 budgeted again, which is what we had this year, and then we increased it because we bought the, got the grant money for the cascade system, so we did an amendment. But we budgeted 45 for next year as well.
So there's about 14 left, so as Guy said, that would cover the air packs. And so the $15,770 would come out of next year's budget. Any questions?
Does that catch them all up, Steve?
For the air packs, for the air packs, they would be caught up, they're good for 15 years, so in like 12 years, 11 years, let's start purchasing again, more. And then the bunker gear, I think I got about two more years worth of purchase.
Are you meaning that like 10 more?
For bunker gear?
Yep.
10 more should do it, I think. I need to go through and check everybody's gear, I haven't had a chance yet, but.
Why don't you check on that, Steve, it'd be good information for
Hold you back.
Next budget.
Yeah, Danielle's asked me a couple of times and I've, I've been busy and I haven't had a chance yet, but I will.
Will that be available for next month then, Steve?
Yeah, we can go for next month.
Okay.
What is the pleasure of the council on the current ask for the air packs and the bunker gear? I will say that I like that we've staggered it out, so we're not replacing everything all at once. So I appreciate, I know it feels onesie twosie as we go through these, but I appreciate that we're not going to have to do a full replacement.
And was he looking for an approval?
I believe so.
They're gonna, their packs, they're gonna put it in order Monday, so they can get them ordered right away. The bunker gear, I'll have them come out and measure everybody's head, whenever he can get out here and measure people, but.
So I'd move, go ahead and purchase the bunker gear for $13,966.46.
The air packs.
For the air packs, yes.
Motion by Trump, second by Shantz, any other discussion? So that was an approval or a motion for the air packs for $13,966.46. Right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carries. So, and then on the bunker gear, do we want to wait on that until we know what those final numbers are, is that what it sounds like?
I think we should wait till we get a solid number.
We'll look for that next month then, Steve.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, Public Works.
Okay, back up real quick.
Yes.
I wanted to thank Guy for grabbing a fire truck to fire the other day for us, we were shorthanded and he was in the right place at the right time and a new fireman training.
Thank you, no problem, anytime.
I don't know if you guys heard, but we did deliver a baby last month here in Albernette, that was pretty exciting for us.
Congratulations, that is very exciting.
Somebody played Starcom.
Yep.
Mr. Trimble.
Yeah.
I don't think I have anything to add to the report. Except, I just got a high listation warning out of the blue, I don't think it's raining that hard, but I may have to take off and go check Pat.
Are you going to mention Lee?
Oh.
Oh, yeah, it's in my report that we hired Sloan to be the part-time seasonal worker. It's been working great, he's doing a great job. Anybody have any questions?
I missed it, who'd you say you hired?
Lee Sloan.
Don't know him.
He. He would be Adam and Kerry Sloan's son, he's 17 years old, he'll be a senior this fall.
Okay, sounds good.
He is doing very well.
Any other questions? All right, guys, well, if you have to drop, we understand.
You see me disappear, you know where I'm going.
Appreciate it. All right, on to the city clerk's report.
I just wanted to mention that we started doing the distribution of the HACAP food boxes. Guy's been really great about going to Hiawatha and picking those up. We put something out at city hall and at the post office and at Lefty's. And on our social media pages that we were going to have these available for distribution. It was a little bit slow going at first, people were unsure if they should take them or not, if they were eligible to take them. I think once the word got out, people were taking more. But then it kind of slowed down a little bit, so we weren't sure if we should continue or if we should back off a little bit. So this week, we just took it down and we only did hand, the distribution on Thursday instead of, we had been doing it Mondays and Thursdays when the school did the food, the lunch distribution for the students. And then we had an evening distribution at the fire station. And so this week, we only did it today, and it went actually pretty well. Guy handled it today and he said that there were quite a few people who seemed like there was, there was still a need for the boxes of food. So I think we're going to just continue to do it, but only once a week going forward. And then, I mean, obviously, if people have a need, we want them to reach out and we can help directly if they need that, but.
It might not hurt to repost on social media with the schedule change, I know this is all just happening, but let it back out and just reemphasize if they need it outside of those hours to get ahold of you.
It's a good idea. I will do that.
Any questions from council? Danielle, I did notice that you had an attachment as well for the recodification.
Yes.
Did you need any action on that, it was a lot, I'm going to be honest, I didn't get through it all.
Oh, that's okay, I don't need any action, I just, it has been a lot, the code writer has been working on it and she sent that to me and we're kind of supposed to start looking at it and giving feedback and answering some questions, and so I wasn't sure how we wanted to proceed, if we wanted to designate anybody on council, or if you all just wanted to take time and look at it at your, you know, at the, at the time that you have and then give feedback, we can circle back, or if we needed to have a committee.
I was going to maybe recommend a committee, just to designate a few people to review it and come with a recommendation.
Okay.
But I would look to council to see if, how involved each of you want to be, or if that sounds like a plan. How quickly are they moving on this, Danielle? Is it, is it our leisure, I mean, is it one of those where we kind of set the pace?
Yeah, we can, we can set the pace. I mean, we want to obviously keep going with it, and I don't want to drop the ball and let it sit too long, but I think they recognize that we're limited by resources, so.
Any volunteers to review some of that feedback, I'd be happy to.
Would we do this over Zoom like this, then, together with them, or just read it ourselves and?
We would probably meet at city hall, the people on the committee here locally, and then we could go through it, I mean, you could go through it on your own, and then we could meet and discuss. You know, plan a couple of sessions to meet and go over. It, and get feedback.
And do that if you need somebody.
If you need somebody, third, I'll be available.
You'd be available also.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll work through that.
Okay.
We'll follow up on that.
I forgot to mention that, I apologize.
No problem. All right, that brings us to item number 10, approval of the consent agenda, are there any additions?
There are, I have three bills to add. Sorry, here they are. Chester has reviewed these already, we have a bill from Chicago Central and Pacific Railroad, which is our bi-annual bill for the water piping that goes underneath the railroad tracks, I believe, is that?
It's the sewer.
Sewer, okay, the sewer line that goes under the railroad tracks, we have to pay a every two-year lease fee of $680, so that is to Chicago Central and Pacific Railroad for $680. And then we have an invoice from Bluegrass for new lawn mixture, some, I think, seeding or weed lawn stuff that Guy needed $6.38. And then there is a mileage reimbursement for, looks like Guy made a trip up to Waterloo to the Keystone Lab and used his personal vehicle, so that was $58.65.
Perfect, thank you. With those changes, I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move.
Moved by Bozenberg.
Second.
Second by Menson, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moves us into new business, water tower cleaning and painting quote, Danielle, are you comfortable addressing that, or do we want to see if maybe Guy will return?
I can start, I can bring up the conversation and hopefully he'll come back. I'm going to try to share the screen so I can get the information up here, let me see if this works. Can you see this screen? Okay, so, let me go back, and we did budget, some extra money guy has been talking about having the water tower cleaned for a couple of years. And he got a quote from this K&amp;W coatings. So it looks like there are two options that he discussed, one was just to wash the interior, which was $4,000. And then if they wash it and then spot prime it and then repaint the entire exterior, it's going to be $14,850. And I believe that this is what Guy was leaning toward, because the, the person he spoke with said that usually what happens when they start washing the exterior is they come across rust spots and paint chipping places that need to be repainted anyway. So again, the wash, spot prime and repaint was $14,850, and that's with the same logo, and then the, to have it clean and inspected on the inside. Which I don't technically know anything about, but the cost of that is $800. So I think that would be an important piece of it. And then he did get a quote for if they wanted to put, if you, the pleasure of the council was to put the new logo on the water tower, it would be an additional $2,400. And that was one, just one side of the tower. So I think I had a budget, okay, he had some pictures in here of the current tower, the, you know, the state of it. And then the current logo. Can you guys see this, okay?
Yep.
And then, let's see here. He just went out and got some pictures on this beautiful sunny day to share with you all. And the base of the tower. I think he was trying to find if there were some rust spots. Or some spots that looked like they would need some help. There are some spots where it's chipped and rusted. And then the water fund balance. It looks like we have in the equipment fund about $10,000 left in this fiscal year. We were kind of looking at the water fund in whole, and I think there were a couple other places where we could pull an extra thousand from, do you remember Chester? Okay.
I think we decided we paid part of it this year and the rest of the next year.
Yeah, if the pleasure of the council is to do the project, we could expend the remaining funds in the water equipment fund, which is the 10,000, and then see if we could pay the rest of it in the next fiscal year, depending on the pleasure of the council.
The only thing we're required to do is do the cleaning, which is required by the DNR. But I think we would be prudent to go ahead and have the outside checked and touched up and painted, because it makes the tower last longer.
Yeah, it's starting to show quite a bit of grime, and I know the fire department's been out and tried to blow some of it off and it just didn't work, so I do think we need to go contracted service to do that.
If you let it go again, get a lot of more bits and stuff, it's just going to cost more.
Yeah.
So it looks like it would be $15,000, sorry, $15,650 if we did the wash, spot prime and repaint the entire exterior plus cleaning and inspection of the inside. And then if we did want to update the logo with the additional $2,400, that would put it at $18,050 for a total.
Do we got, what, $10,000 in there for this year yet?
Yeah.
In the next year?
Correct.
Okay.
And Guy did get three estimates, and this was by far the cheapest one.
Chester, you know if this same company did it last time?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And he said they were about half of what some of the others wanted. I know, I thought they did a good job last time.
And when, does, you know the date we did the last one? I don't rec, I think probably about 10, at least 10 years, doesn't it?
I can, I can see if I can pull it up here.
It's been a while, I know. Time flies when we're having fun.
Yeah.
2012.
Almost, yeah.
I think we'd be prudent to do it, I don't, other than the logo.
I would agree on the logo, I think we just need to keep it
Yep.
basic, I don't think there's any reason to get fancy.
Ready for a motion?
I would be, yes.
I move, we go ahead and spot or wash, spot treat and repaint the exterior water tower and have them clean and inspect the interior. Estimated cost of $15,650.
Motion by Trump.
Second.
Second by Shantz, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right, new business, item B, seasonal part-time employee wage rate.
This is, this is Guy's thing too, but I will speak on his behalf, let me try to share my screen again. Can you all see that wage rate?
Yes.
Rate, whatever you want.
Zoom in a little bit.
Yeah, let me see.
Down in the bottom right-hand corner, there's a Zoom.
Okay. So we hired, or Guy hired Lee Sloan to do seasonal part-time work for the city and we hadn't officially set a rate for pay, so Guy let Lee know that we would discuss it and he would let him know what the council had decided. So I believe we talked about around the grade five step one. But I
That's what Guy and I and you discussed.
Okay, okay, I thought that was.
$13.54 an hour.
Okay.
And when you say part-time, what's the projection for this summer, do we know?
I don't know, he's already started and he's been working maybe six hours a day, a couple days a week, so.
Now, is he a student or what's his status?
Yes, he's 17, he's going to be a senior this year at the high school. And that's all I know.
There any, do you know if there are any duties who's limited because he's not 18?
Ah, I don't think so. Actually, I don't know, I'm not going to answer that because I don't know for sure, but I will check into that. I did let the insurance company know that we had hired him and that he was, I, I mean, I provided his age, so I will check though on the restrictions, that's a good question.
Does the job description make any, say anything about wage level on this thing, on part-time?
It did not.
Okay.
And I'm going to just show how out of touch I am, and I apologize, what's minimum wage right now?
$7.50 something, isn't it?
Is it by, it's by state, right?
Yeah. We have a raise in about 10 years here.
$7.25. Do you want me to call Guy?
No, it's fine, um, sorry, I shouldn't let it be silent, uh, my thought process is I think the grade five is generous. I would even entertain possibly grade four, I mean, it's well above minimum wage, he's not anything, we're going to transition into a full-time, full-time, part-time with him being a student. So from a retention standpoint, it's there's less investment on our part. But I'd be interested in what others think.
I agree with Bethany on this. Since he is 17, it's not like he can run equipment, yeah, he can drive vehicles, but yeah, he's not even equipped operator status, so he's basically a laborer.
He's a lot more.
Yeah, so Bethany, I agree with you, I'm having a tough time seeing my phone, so can you say the wage again?
Yeah, I'm sorry, so at, at grade four, it was $12.10 an hour, and the grade five was $13.54 an hour. And again, minimum wage is seven and a quarter.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Bethany, on the lower wage.
I think that level four seems to be a little more appropriate. Can you hear me?
Yep, we got you. We got Dave and Chester as well.
Yeah.
You need a motion on this, Danielle?
I think a motion would be good.
I would take a motion to approve grade four, level one of $12.10 for the seasonal worker hired recently. for the seasonal worker hired recently.
Make motion.
Moved by Bozenberg.
Second.
Second by Trump. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Alright, new business, 11C, city logo apparel for employees.
Okay. Guy was supposed to steal a show for this thing and he's not here, so I will speak again.
He's doing a great job.
Let me see if I can share the screen again. Okay, can you all see that? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, so Guy had mentioned he has some City of Alvernet shirts that are getting really worn out and he was interested in getting some more. I think the presentation of being out in the community when we're working and being able to show people that we work for the city is important. So we were interested in the council's thoughts on providing some updated shirts or uniforms or apparel, all of the above. I don't know. Sorry, I'm not doing very good now.
Just fine. So this was included in your packet, so it looks like you guys went around to some of the local communities to see what they do as far as providing uniforms or uniform allowance. So it just comes down to what our pleasure is. I do see several of them are split between administrative staff and public works. Some of them even allowing the allowance to go towards things other than logoed apparel. So for boots, jeans, jackets for, mainly for public works, because they need special equipment or special apparel, such as steel-toed boots, reflective jackets, jean, work jeans wear out.
So this is pretty standard as far as a lot of cities go. I know, obviously I work for the city. I'm wearing one of their shirts right now. They supply me with 10 shirts every year. They buy me a jacket as needed. I get reimbursed $150 a year for boots. So this isn't like uncommon. So I'll just leave it at that. I'm, I'm 100% for this because it is a great benefit as an employee.
I would like to add that Guy and I were talking about what we, if we were able to express what it is that we were wanting or hoping to have come out of this. I don't think we feel that we would, that it would be necessary to have even an annual allowance right now. We thought if you guys were open to it, we could just get a couple of shirts or jackets or whatever we felt or whatever you guys were comfortable with now. And then if there was a need later, we could address it at that time. I don't know how you all feel, but I don't know if it makes sense to do it on an annual basis. I mean, and then we'd also discussed, I talked to Brooke Gilcrest at Brooks Embroidery and she's getting us some numbers and some options for items that we could order. And we thought if anybody on council wanted to order a shirt with a logo on it at the same time, I mean, you probably have to pay for it, but if we're paying the setup fee already, it would probably be a minimal cost if anybody, if you guys wanted a shirt to wear a council member, because it's very exciting to have the logo on it.
Danielle, would you do like a t-shirt or would you do like a polo shirt? I would assume Guy would do t-shirts. I'm just curious.
So Guy had mentioned he wanted to do some t-shirts to work during the day, like maybe five or so short sleeve shirts and then he wanted some long sleeve shirts. I would probably want just maybe a jacket, like a three-quarters zip jacket that I could wear because I'm always cold, but I don't wear polos very often, so I wouldn't probably opt for that. I maybe would get a t-shirt, but that would be about it.
Okay, why don't, I think, why don't you guys get some prices and kind of just what you want, so we have a little better idea?
Okay.
And then we can obviously as a council decide.
Okay.
I think that's a great idea. I will say I'm totally in favor of this, but whereas, you know, Brian, you said they supply it for you. I'd rather you guys have the flexibility to choose what you want. We're small, you know, we have two employees. So we've got that ability. So yeah, definitely get us some prices and I'd be interested to.
And Danielle?
Yeah.
I'm going to speak for Guy. Can you look for like a reflective winter jacket? Like one, one that has a removable liner. That's what we have at work and they're great.
Okay.
And from a safety standpoint.
He did just get the one when the fire department ordered theirs.
Right.
But, yeah.
Get some quantities, prices.
Okay, we will do that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm for, I'm for that with, you know, as needed. Giving them lump sum every year and saying, here, here's 10 shirts, 10, you know, whatever.
Right. Yeah. I don't know that we would even, yeah, we wouldn't need that. And the, some of the cities, like I know the city of Walker said that they hardly ever use their annual allowance. So when Guy and I were talking about it, we just thought, you know, I don't think there's a need to have a set annual amount, but yeah, we'd just like to broach the subject. I'll get the numbers and we'll, we can discuss at the next meeting.
My office was, was the city on the shirts and stuff.
Oh, yeah, we had.
Or would we, yeah, so they would have to pay income tax on them.
Yeah, that was a question about if it was a taxable benefit or if it was a reimbursable item and some of the cities just purchased it and didn't run it through as a payroll taxable benefit because the amount was so low. Some cities, probably when they're doing a bigger order of a larger quantity, they would have the employee purchase the shirts or whatever it was and then they would reimburse them. And so they would run it through as an AP item and so it wouldn't have to be taxed through payroll. But we could do it however you guys feel would be best and how you're most comfortable with. There was, all the cities that I talked to did it differently, so.
We do ours, the city owns my clothes, shirts and coat, I guess. Yeah, like I said, I get reimbursed for the boots. So actually I get taxed on my boot reimbursement, so.
Oh, right.
I guess however you and Guy would do it, I like it that the city owns my shirts because then I don't pay any tax on it.
Okay. Okay, I think it does make it easier if we do it that way, depending on what the expense is and what the item is. I mean, if, I mean, I can see with the boots, it running through payroll because they're not designated with the city's logo. But yeah, I'll look into it and we'll get you some more information.
Great.
Perfect, thank you. That leads us to item 12, old business, fire station project update, I believe was also Guy. So I don't know Danielle, how speed you are.
Yeah.
Anybody on the committee, I know you guys had a meeting last week or if Chief Graham is still on, his video is hidden. Is, if anybody wants to provide an update, I'd appreciate it.
Can you see the cost sheet that I have pulled up here?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you zoom in a little bit, Danielle?
Yeah, I'm trying to. Is that better?
Yep.
Okay, we did get our second pay app from Huff Contracting. It was 110,492.60 and that was included in the claims report for this month. So you can kind of see where we're at there with the total. Also, we received our bond funding today. We, I don't know if you can see this, but we did get the credit of the 904,950 for the portion of the bond, bond funding that is, has been received to help offset those expenses that are now coming in. And this is just the letter we received from the bonding attorney confirming that amount that we were supposed to receive. I think I was gonna show the pictures of the project. Guy's been going out and taking pictures onsite. I think he shared this with some of you via Google Drive, so that way when he goes out and takes pictures, it'll update. Steve, do you have anything you want to add?
I know I talked to Guy Tuesday, I think, and they were going to hook up the sewer line. They possibly moved the fire hydrant and I think the hydrant was moved. I'm not 100% sure. And then they were going to talk about pouring the offices and the training room floor hopefully tomorrow, which I doubt it with this rain, but next week sometime. And then they'll talk like you're going to start going up and then work on the bay floor, apparatus floor while it was covered. So that's about all he told me, I think.
And they also had, uh, there was a field tile they found under the building and they had to do something with that and they got that filled with cement this week. So I know there'll be a change order for that, but I think they said that it would, it would be a cost savings because they were able to fill it with cement instead of having to do another alternative, which I don't know what the alternative would be.
They didn't reroute that?
No, they just, they were able to plug it with the cement they.
This must have been the beginning of the line or something because it wouldn't have been the end.
No, I don't write in the ditch right there.
That's interesting.
Sorry, I just got disconnected and I'm back. I talked to Guy about that tile and I cannot believe any engineer or designer missed that, but that's actually terrible.
How do you feel about them plugging it with concrete? I mean, it's already done, but.
I, I would have to see the numbers on what it would cost, terdial versus feeling, I assume they filled it full of mortar. It's not a bad idea. I think it's terrible that the engineer missed it. And maybe I made Guy a project book like I use at work to try to keep track of what is being done, what work is being done to make sure we're getting what we're paying for essentially. But like he said, he doesn't have like the time necessarily like I do at work to be on the project 24/7. So they, he said they have a camera up and maybe you guys already discussed this, but that's really awesome actually to have a camera on the site at all times.
Appreciate you providing him that resource too. Hopefully I'll get, so I'm used to out of it, even if he can't be there all the time.
Yeah, I forgot to mention that Mike Givens helped us get a camera and then he and Guy mounted it up on, there's an electrical pole somewhere in that area behind the Hendrickson's house. So they've been working on that and I think they said it takes a little video every 10 minutes or, and/or by motion since, if they sense motion or whatnot. So we were hoping to, you know, for security reasons and then also maybe put together a little time lapse video at the end of the project. So that'll be good. Hopefully that's rolling smoothly.
Awesome. That's a great precaution to have. Alright, is there anything else? That's the end of our agenda. Perfect. Well, thank you all for being patient with the virtual environment again. Brian, I'm sorry you got booted a couple of times, but of course it had to storm during our meeting as well. So with that, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Menson.
Second.
Second by Trump. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.